How's everybody doing?
Good.
Wow, can you hear me?
I can, Gaven, how are you?
This is Chris Tippett.
Chris, how you doing?
I'm good.
Wow.
Yes. Alright, so we got Gaven, Mal, Ron. Waiting on Bunny and Jeanette.
Do you hear Ron? I don't hear Ron.
He's on here.
Guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is Ron.
What's going on, Ron?
Good, I'm getting some odd stuff coming through, so just making sure you can hear me, I can't see anybody.
Really? Okay.
I see you, Lyle.
That's all that matters, Ron, isn't it? I mean, when it comes to all that matters.
For some reason, I have no video.
Well, if you can see me, you'll be able to see the plans in fact, there you go.
There you are.
Got it.
Alright, I know Bunny's gonna join because she was just here like thirty minutes ago.
Alright.
Gaven, is that you Sage 7? Gaven, can you hear me?
Gaven, look muted.
Gaven, can you hear me?
Hey, Gaven?
Send him a text.
I think he's joining by cellphone, I see his Sage 7 pop up, I think that's him. I think he's having computer audio. I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna go ahead and read this preamble while we're waiting on a couple of others to join.
Okay.
All commission members and members of the public have been provided electronic meeting details, materials related to items of business. Meeting all participants except board and commission members and staff will be muted. Chairman will call the meeting to order and the building of the meeting procedures. After the meeting procedures are read, the chairman will conduct a roll call to establish a quorum and document members of the commission in attendance. Building officials then proceed with items of business on the agenda, the chairman will ask for public comment at the appropriate time, but this time, participants will be unmuted to provide comment. If you're gonna provide a comment, please state your name and full address, the chairman will recognize you by name. Be respectful of other meeting participants by being silent, and please mute yourself. So, got some other people joining here. Yes. Okay, thank you. Apparently Bunny's having an issue trying to join, she's trying right now. Gaven, can you hear me? Gaven? You there?
Lyle, send him a chat.
Okay, Bunny is joining right now.
I'll try and text Gaven.
Getting no sound. Alright, Gaven, can you hear me?
We're hearing now.
There's Bunny, Bunny, can you hear us? Says she's connecting to audio. Alright, so we got Ron, Gaven, Bunny, can you hear me? You're muted, but you can hear me. Where's Jeanette?
Hi.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you want to go ahead and get started.
Welcome everyone to the June 9th meeting of the Historical Zoning Commission for the City of Belknead. Let's do a quick roll call to verify that all commissioners, board members are here. Please just answer when your name's called. Gaven Duke?
You're muted.
I'm here, sorry.
Ron Ferris?
Here.
Bunny Blackburn?
Here.
Jeanette Whitson?
Here.
And I'm Mal Wall. Doesn't look like Beth is with us, and do we have Edie?
Edie is on and Beth is on.
Okay. We're also joined by Doug Berry, Council for the City, and Lyle, who is Assistant City Manager and our Building Official. So, Lyle, if you'd like to introduce the first case, we will proceed.
Sure. First item under Old Business, the application for certificate of appropriateness for EO Jack Customs Homes, LLC 4310 Sunnybrook Drive for the demolition of existing home which they got demo-approved, or tent this year, property of conservation and construct a new single-family home. Mark Spocky, if you would unmute yourself, you are up. And I'm gonna share the screen with everyone for those plans. Mark, are you there?
I am, can you hear me, Lyle?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. So, we have updated our plans. We've contracted with Chris Tippett, who's on this call right now, to go over, he is going to help us kind of go over the changes that he made to the plans. So, I would like to let him speak, if that's okay.
Hi, this is Chris Tippett, I'm with Tippett C's Baker Architecture. And Mark asked us to come on and take a look at the house and try to make some changes to make it more historically correct. And so, the first things that we addressed was the portico, obviously, changing that, getting the right proportion columns and all the proportions of the pediment there correct. We made the windows on either side of that front portico taller and and then we added a more traditional door with side lights to be more in keeping with this style of architecture, this kind of American colonial architecture here. It is a clambered house with corner boards and then we changed the dormers to make the styles and head of that more traditional and just went to shed dormers. So, kept the rock base that was there. Actually, Mark, did you get then the latest elevation where it's showing the retaining wall of this?
Yeah, yes, I thought I had sent that. I was logging in right now on my other computer that
So, what we have tried to do was, we raised the house up to 647.5 for the finished floor, keeping the grade at 645 and then creating a series of steps along the walkway to take us down to the drive so that the drive is more like 640 at the walkway. So that we could have a retaining wall right here on the side that's flush there that steps down as well. And that's the only retaining wall that we, is wired. So it is, and we're stepping it so that it's only a couple of feet above grade from the street on each side. So, you know, we're saying there's a retaining wall here and there's a series of steps there coming down along the walkway, connecting to the driveway, I'm sorry that you don't have that.
If you'll send that to me right now, I'll put it up on the screen.
Okay.
I did, Lyle, I just emailed it to you.
Okay. So, we're trying to minimize, trying to keep no retaining wall on the side property line and the visual retaining wall from the front as small as possible. There we go, perfect, there you go. So that's the front, so you can see how we've created these steps along the walkway to get us down to a lower driveway. And that means that along the side yard, we don't have to have a retaining wall between us and our neighbor. So. Is the hope. And then I'm happy discussing the changes we've done to the side, just trying to clean up and simplify the side elevations to make them cleaner and more. Really got it down to three window types and a couple of door types. So, I'll try and answer any questions, anybody has?
I think it looks really, this is Gaven Duke. I think it looks really nice. I'm wondering about that retaining wall, is it a stone retaining wall?
Yes, it is, it's a stone retaining wall that ties into the base of the house. So it'd be completely flush, Gaven with the front and just steps down so that it ties into the whole base of the house, which is stone, so. There you can see it in the side elevation.
There we go.
Okay.
I just tried to simplify the sides, we changed to gables in the back, got rid of the hips that were back there so that it's more in keeping with the style of the house. And the base kind of stepped in a couple of places around it, we've taken it all the way to where it's just at the main floor level and just wraps around the house completely. And changed a little bit detailing of the rear deck that was there. Tried to have some more traditional detailings of the railing and the post.
This is Jeanette Whitson. It looks so much better and the windows are all very proportionate and streamlined, having them and very well balanced. This revision is exactly what we were asking for.
I want to add to that too, Mark, just to say thank you that you've, I think you really listened and have addressed the concerns that we had. And this is such a vast improvement from the beginning and I appreciate that you were willing to just to take some of the suggestions that we had.
No problem, enjoyed it, it was fun trying to figure out the puzzle, so.
Hey, this is Ron Ferris. Echo the other comments, some semantics that I think we do need to cover and make sure that we're addressing is that, Lyle, you need a reaction of the cast stone water table?
Yeah, I noticed that.
We called it out as cast stone, it could be limestone as well, I mean, but it, the attention would be for it to look like limestone, even if it was cast stone, there are some good products out there that you couldn't tell the difference. But if y'all say it needs to be limestone, we can do that, so.
Well, the, one, back up and say compliments to the revisions, I think they look great. I'm super excited about it, I think it's a, it's an ordinance question for Lyle. I believe the ordinance reads, we need natural materials.
That's correct.
I like the detail and can appreciate the detail.
I think, yeah, I think that it also, when you look at the other houses on the street, it's gonna fit in very nicely with what is there already.
I agree, appreciate the attention to the retaining wall. Unless there's other comments, I would make a motion to approve the revision to limestone water table.
Do we have a second?
I'll say, this is Gaven, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Ron Ferris.
Yeah.
Thank you for the, thank you for your review and for your comments and we'll make that change and submit it to Lyle.
It's great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Alright, next item under Old Business, the application for certificate of appropriateness for chandelier development, Bellevue Drive South, demolition of existing home, property of significance and construct a new single-family home. And I believe they got permission to demo at the last meeting.
They did.
Joel, you'll unmute yourself, you are up and I will share the screen.
Alright, thank you all, good afternoon, everyone. Waiting on Lyle's screen here. Okay, so, some of the comments, we talked through last, last meeting was the moving the driveway access to shield the three-car garage there on the Bellevue South Drive. So that's, you can see there in the top right, we made that revision to the driveway. Preston's indicated planting a screen wall of evergreens, which we're showing there. So that was one of the comments that we addressed from last, last month's meeting. Second, we had always planned to do a cedar shake roof, it was requested for us to do copper gutters. And so we made that change as well. Last month, we talked about the style of house and providing a more inviting or more pronounced front entrance, which I think Preston has provided. There in the bottom right.
Joel, if I may jump in and speak to a couple of the details, this is Preston Shay. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, great. Yeah, so we, as Joel mentioned, we updated the drive and big picture, we had only the front and left side elevations, so in this package, this is the first time we're seeing the right and rear elevations. But as Joel mentioned, we added the copper gutters by request, we added a belt course by request. Regarding the portico itself, we left the structure alone. Played up the entry steps and railing a little bit and that just kind of works per grade. All the images I was able to go through, didn't really show anything overly ornate at the front door, so we, I think this is hopefully ornate enough for the style and, you know, befitting the home. And then, one of the other changes we'd made was to change the shed dormers to gable, as it seemed to be more in keeping with the style. See, on the front elevation, the three dormers had been shed, we changed those to gable. It seemed to be pretty frequent in most of the images we were able to find. The overall height of this home is now fairly well-defined. I guess thirty-three feet and change, which is well below the bulk standards and pretty close to the existing or the previous house that was there, so happy to keep that in line. Well, let's see, yes, it is left side elevation, first time we've seen this in this style. And we were able to, sorry, keep the, for the pattern of the gambrel roofs as we made our way around the entire house, really. I kept the main box, the primary house there in brick, which will be a great unpainted brick that, I believe Joel's got samples for you. And then some of the intermediate portions, the back of the house and the connectors, we've dropped back to still a fine material in artisan siding. Just wanted to sort of downplay and transition from, you know, proper main house to a little more relaxed rear connector. And you can kind of see that on the right side elevation as well on the previous page, or I'm sorry, the next page. Yes, the same idea there, we've got sort of the proper main house in brick. And then we're dropping back to some of those more relaxed forms with the shed roof and the artisan siding. And then kind of continue that on to the right there at the garage. Again, sort of breaking the form, breaking the formality down a little bit as we transition around the corner and toward the cottages on the other street.
This is Jeanette Whitson, I think this is a great improvement. I really appreciate you've streamlined that Dutch colonial style, I think looks so much better. Moving the driveway, I think makes that three-car garage, you won't really see it from the street with the row of trees in front of it, I think that's much better. I think Gaven had wanted the front to be highlighted, I do feel like you've done that some. I think you did take all of our comments and attempted to work to improve the house and I do like the thirty-three foot overall height, I think will really blend this house much better into that neighborhood of cottages. With the true shingles and the true brick. Um, how many steps up to the front door?
Looks like maybe five or six in total. And that's, that's more or less natural grade with, with very little manipulation, you know, the kind you wouldn't notice at construction.
It feels, that feels out of proportion to me that you're that high. I'd like to see what the rest of the committee thinks, that may be, something about that doesn't seem right.
Properties, slopes from back to front, so, just being on crawl space, you know, putting on the rise of step, you know, generally, they're six, seven inches. You know, that creates the three-foot minimum crawl space height that I need. But it also just happens to, you know, to just ride on the lot with the current grading of the lot.
This is Lyle, it looks like it falls about ten feet from the back property line to the front porch.
And as drawn, it's about forty-two inches from the, from grade to to the front porch, or a little more from grade to actual finished floor. And Lyle, if you can go to the next sheet, A202. Yeah, so the dashed line running through the right side elevation is natural grade. And if you, yeah, there we go. So we can see natural grade through there and one option is you know, what sort of works with the natural photography with minimal grading. And I don't think it would be a hard thing at all to sort of minimize the exposure at the foundation there.
This is Gaven, I think it's a much better rendition and I like the direction of everything. Maybe if you could explain why you went to brick for the main body versus the inspirational photos?
I think brick was the preferred material, I think for Joel. And it was also a means by which to break it up visually, so the brick will be a little darker and it, it didn't just run on. It's just to give us a little bit of definition between the main house and the more handed forms.
I'm not opposed to going back, and I don't have the last drawing in front of me, but if I remember correctly, that second floor of that Gabriel that we're looking at on the left, might have been the artisan siding too.
It had been, yeah.
You know, if that's preferred, you know, I'm open to doing that.
Hey, this is Ron Ferris, first compliments to the revisions. Quite pleased with what I'm seeing, attention to detail and just the general massing and scale. If I back up and remember, a lot of the board comments were centered around just total scale of the project, I think it's, it's been very delicately handled on a way to get the scale and massing for a corner lot out of the previous schemes. I, I'm willing to have a discussion about materials, I'm not opposed to the unpainted brick and the siding. I get, to me, that gets to be a bit subjective, I can make a case. Either way, I'm open to other board members' discussion, I don't know that I'm prepared to, to to make a decision for Joel on that, I think that's a a broad choice for him. I can appreciate on one hand that we've, we see a lot of white houses today and Pendleman may be swinging back to some more natural materials and dissimilar of this. There's other examples around where you can say the original house was There's other examples around where you can say the original house was, was brick and the additions were put on in siding. That may be the game they're, they're trying to play. I say that respectfully.
Just one man's opinion. It, it seems to me that having the main house in brick and the, the back portion of it in siding does, does reduce the mass massiveness of that whole side of the house as it goes down Bellevue. So I'm sort of leaning toward the way they've got it drawn.
My one comment on the front steps that Bunny brought up is that my initial reaction was similar is that those steps seemed a bit large and extensive. But I also go back to some of the inspiration photos that they provided, which I'm great to see. And there's some detailing they did on an image that if you scroll down on their images, there's a side view of a porch and it's got a little slight arched butt jointed wood door with hinges on it. It's got quite a number of steps. I think this style of house can, can shoulder those kinds of steps or can have that base. I'd say just a little more attention to the detail versus grading. Man, I like the image that's up. I love the similarity between that view and what Joel and Preston are providing. I think that that porch could be detailed just a little bit more to be successful. These type of homes historically set up off of grade a fair amount for a lot of reasons. And so.
Could we look at the other elevation? I guess it would be facing the house to the left elevation. So the windows on the front part, you have that in the brick section. That's a lot of brick with no windows in there.
The right side.
In the front part of the house, the brick portion of the house.
Yeah, that is downstairs. That's in the master closet. And we could, we could surely add a window in there.
I think that would be more attractive, add a window.
Can do.
And you talking about what detail in that brick above the window, above that, it's are you doing one line of soldiers? I mean, the brickwork above the window, it's
Yeah, it's a, it's a 12-inch jack arch and those brick are, are set completely vertical in the center and then they spring from a common point. And they are, the one shown is 12 inches. They they go up to 16 inches. They go pretty tall. But so this is sort of a brick and a half. And it's a, it's a pretty fine, pretty traditional detail.
So if you added a window there, what are you, what would you suggest?
I would do the same. I would put the jack arch header above the window that we are adding in the closet. Same jack arch as shown there on the side and also in the front. So, so basically anywhere the window is set in brick, it'll have a jack arch.
What size window, if you're, if that's a closet? Do you do to add to improve that brick wall there?
Yeah, I would say, you know, at least a 3066. I'll look at it to see if, if it would be better to match what's in the master or better to match what's on the front, say in the study or bedroom two. They're not in the same room, so you know, internally it wouldn't matter, but you know, a full-size window, to be certain.
And then to the, and the further toward the front, and it, this it may be a different elevation, may show a different, right there where you've got your pencil. Yeah. So and then back in the next section, I mean, that's from that window that's kind of on the far left. It just
Yeah, I, I looked at adding a window where Lyle had just made the red circle and it really, really started to crowd that area. And it would have been, you know, directly adjacent, one of the windows in the front. So wanted to make it the same size and it was, it was overpowering for that little spot, but
Is that, do you know, to the, to their change in plane there?
I'm sorry, broke up on me just a little bit.
How many feet of brick wall till there is the change in plane right there? Like, how big a section is that?
That's five feet. And the windows on the front are four feet wide. So the window on the front, say just to the left of the front door, that's as a four-foot wide window. And being as that would be in the same room, the, the thought, initial thought would be to match that, but
Right.
it just all ended up getting a bit tight. But I definitely agree, a window in the, in the master closet would make sense. Yeah, that, that area, I, I had initially done a window there.
This way, it's a, yeah, it just, it's hard to, for perspective.
Sure.
So that was what I was asking. It's, I think that's fine.
Did, did the floor plan change since the elevations were done or vice versa?
Hey, Gaven, I added an offset at the kitchen. Reworked the butler's pantry to, you know, we'll do something fairly unique there just to get the windows to balance on the exterior. And then I did bring the kitchen in or down on the papers we're looking at now in order to create a corner so that we could turn it with the brick. But outside of that, nothing significant.
Okay. And have you ever thought about instead of a window into that master closet, maybe a blank window or something with, do you have any other shutters on the house?
On the front, there's shutters.
We do.
Could it be a blank shutter window as opposed to, I know when you get in a closet, you lose a lot of space.
This is Joel. I would, I'll be receptive to whatever often you guys come up with, but I would be more, I would prefer this, you know, shutter window or the, you know, false shutter. Because yeah, it will eat up a good bit of wall space for closet built-ins would be my concern with that.
I think if you could center a window on the one above that's, that shuttered, that would help that plane of brick that Bunny brought up. So I'm
Yeah, this is Gaven. I think it needs some dimensional difference on that big elevation to change, change that big brick wall.
Yeah, I like the idea of the closed shutters and we'll go ahead and detail it so that it has the, the jack arch and the, and the roll lock and hardware so so it looks like an authentic opening.
Yeah. This is Gaven again. Is there any way that we could come and make this to about 30 inches for steps so that you don't have to have all the picket railing?
You talking about the front?
Yeah, Lyle, isn't it 30 inches before you have to have pickets and rail?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think it would really clean your elevation. You know, 30 inches and do a post and rail there as opposed to having all those pickets.
This is Joel. Gaven, this is natural grade, so we can add topsoil, of course, and, you know, build the beds. I think we could bring it up to get to the 30 inches, elevate the sidewalk up to the step. That would address the rolling concern. And then also, you know, there wouldn't be quite as many steps up to the front patio.
I think that would be an improvement, especially as I recall the, the front lot, the front slopes down the street. And so I feel like that that's going to, the feel of the house being elevated is going to be more exaggerated from the street. And so if you can bring that down some, I do believe that that would be an improvement.
Okay, I don't see an issue with, with that at all. That would, that's a easy item to address.
Yeah, I think, I think all the pretty images that you've shown, all those are really clean and, you know, they've, they've got really crisp lines and no pickets.
Can do.
Is there a rear elevation that shows the porch and the fireplace or is it just a cross-section? See a cross-section auxiliary elevation, but I don't see a rear elevation.
Yeah, A202 is about as close to a rear elevation as I think we're going to get. The, the garage would obscure anything else. So yeah, so I've dashed in the fireplace just to, so we can see how roof lines converge and just not to obstruct the view. But yeah, there, there's that plane and then we step back and if Lyle would pan to the left, then we'd see the back of the garage.
Got it.
I'm gonna, and I can't remember who said this earlier, but the more I look at this, I, I agree that I think it would be better if it were all on the clapboard because it does seem to get a little bit, we've got a couple of different roofs going here, a lot of different lines, just a little bit cleaner. My eye wants to see it all on the clapboard. So that's not a make or break on it, but just a suggestion that somebody made earlier and I agree with.
Well, just as Bunny, I made that comment. I, I could see having the brick base on it, maybe bringing clappard up above that wall. Could be a if they entertain it.
I'm speaking for Joel here. I think, I think we'd entertain anything that got us passed. But, but in all honesty, that, you know, there's a bit of a back and forth. Do you do it all, all clappard? Because that was maybe the, the most traditional way to go about it. Then on the other hand, we were trying to sort of break down the forms so that it didn't get so monolithic and, and would appear visually a little less imposing, but
I just think it would be cleaner looking, a little, the inspiration pictures are mostly the clapboard. It just, it's a, it's a cleaner look. Because from this side elevation, the street side, that's, there's a good bit going on there. And it just cleans it up a little bit. And again, this is another suggestion that may, may not work. I'm looking at the, the windows in that front brick and I feel like the bottom windows seem that they could be pulled a little bit more. That, no, it was the elevator we were just looking at. Those front windows in the brick, that's probably dining room or something. Let me see. They seem to be pushed out to the corners a little bit and that, could you pull those in just a little bit so there's not such that big brick fence in the middle again?
I wish I can.
And anybody else can comment on that too?
Well, Bunny, this is Gaven. I, I agree with that. If they could bring them in slightly and I think that there's a lot of valid points of this sort of dimensionally going back proportionally that if you had above the water table in the clappard and the rest of the house clappard above that water table, it would really be tying into the neighborhood and simplify it.
Again, as Preston mentioned, I'm not opposed to, to going in that direction. If that's the consensus of the board and the direction you wanted us to go, that's, that's what we'll plan to do.
And what are the windows? What are, what are you doing on the windows? Out of, there's probably, I'm sure it's there somewhere and I just haven't missed it.
It'll be aluminum clad.
So is it metal clad outside, wood inside? This is Gaven.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Gaven, that's correct.
And then one more question on windows. So if we go to that left elevation again, there's some windows kind of hidden behind that where you've drawn and that looks, are those two windows on that bottom level or is that one big square window? What is behind that fireplace?
That is, it's a fixed large window. It's, it's in sort of a transitional hallway in a, in a breakfast area. And picture windows for the style are somewhat common. Well, I'd say as these things evolve and additions happen, it's, it's a pattern that's done.
It feels a little odd in keeping with the other windows in the house, the style of the house. So do you have some show us where that's been done?
Windows are, I'm sorry, Joel, what, the opposite wall there, the breakfast?
Yeah, we could, we could just repeat those.
I think, I think that would be more attractive, maybe to do two windows there instead of one big
It would be three to replicate the opposite wall.
Okay, can I, can we go back to that elevation? Okay.
Joel, I'm actually showing.
Okay. So you've got three. Now, I think that would be, can we go back there again, that, the elevation, the exterior elevation to up and of that side so we can look at it again?
The three windows in plan was reminiscent from the old plan. I'm actually showing two.
Okay.
So if we could repeat those two on the other side, would that be okay?
I think that I wonder if they should have a little, could you, well, and again
Nobody's gonna see that.
Yeah, that, that's interior to the house. I mean, that, that's not on an exterior wall.
Nobody's gonna see that.
Okay, so that was not on the left side? No, that's, that's behind the fireplace in the interior. Got it. Okay, that's what, that was my question a while ago. Okay, so that is look at the floor plan. That is the deep interior. You'd have to be standing in the backyard. Nobody's gonna see that. Okay, fine.
Nobody will see it.
Okay.
This is Gaven again. Lyle, what is the ruling on the height of a fireplace? I'm sorry, bring that up again.
It's three feet above the closest thing. It's gotta be 10 feet away from the nearest. So it's
But didn't you say 16 feet was an exterior fireplace?
The maximum is I'm sorry, Gaven, what are you, what are you asking me to say?
Our place had to be 16 feet high for an exterior?
No, the requirement has just got to be three feet higher than anything that's within 10 feet.
Okay, is, is this a house chimney or is it a landscape chimney?
It's attached to the porch. It's, there's a porch that it is attached to.
Correct.
Okay, how tall is that?
It is about 31, 32 feet. And it's about 18 feet above the porch and it's mostly so that it can clear the main house, or the code Lyle mentioned.
Was, was there any consideration to the porch? This is really just a I think a benefit potentially to the house. Any consideration of that porch growing farther along the back elevation?
Well, I know we're fighting
Go ahead.
We're fighting the allowable footprint. So I think we're, we're fairly well maxed out.
Got you.
Unless concessions could be made.
Is there anyone else, is, is there anyone else on the call who would like to make comments about this proposal?
I would. Hi, this is Carolyn Sorensen. And first of all, I would like
Your address, please.
Oh, I'm Carolyn Sorensen, 106 South Bellevue Drive, the property next door. My husband and I think there have been a lot of great improvements over this design. But having lived on this street for 30 years, I just noticed this today. But having lived on this street for 30 years, I just noticed this today when I was looking at the site plan about the front walkway going out on Southwest Bellevue. You can flip down to that. And then the driveway ending at the garage. So that street is very, very narrow and it makes a real sharp dog leg turn no matter where you go. So there's not a likelihood that the owner of this house is going to have people park in the front. It's going to be very problematic because right across the street is the entrance to the temple. So would it, is it allowable for them to make a loop driveway on the side of South Bellevue? So extend where it says guest parking back out to the street. So people that visit would be more inclined to park in their driveway than on the street. That, am I being clear?
I follow. This is Joel. I follow what you're, you're saying. I would be all for that and eliminate the lead wall that Preston is showing there to Bellevue Drive West because, you know, it would not be of use. And it would help getting in and out of the guest parking area much more if you had a, a second connector to Bellevue South.
Yeah.
Well, I think you're just gonna, Lyle will have to speak to hardscape limits. You know, whether, are you maxing out on your hardscape limits here or is that allowed if you take the front walkway out? I don't know.
Well, you're allowed 12% of the total square footage of the lot for driveway. 20% of the front yard can be in concrete. So it's a matter of numbers.
Is, is there a, Matt's question, is there a way to use a permeable pavement so you have not as much stormwater runoff?
No. I mean, you can use, you can use a permeable paver, but that doesn't help driveway number.
Okay.
This is Joel. I think right now, based on what I see, we're going to be under the ordinance and the bulk standard. So I, that's not the way we can, we can calculate and draw, but Preston, I think on one of these drawings, you had some figures.
I do, and I was, I was just looking at that. Depending on what we consider front yard, if, if Bellevue Drive South is what we're considering front yard, which is what I did my calculations on, it's kind of the worst case. We're, we're again approaching maximums on allowable coverage. If Lyle says that.
West will be your front yard.
Okay, well then, in, in that case, our driveway is primarily in the side yard. We wouldn't really have anything as of yet in the front yard.
What is the sidewalk? What will it be out of? Is it brick?
This is Joel. It could be a brick or, you know, a brim finish concrete or something to keep it from the home.
Well, I think, I think, this is Jeanette Litten. I think if you extend the driveway to go all the way through, that, that would be helpful to the homeowner. I think it would be helpful to everybody on Bellevue Drive South, which you wouldn't have cars either backing out. I think you'd probably want to put some guest parking there, but continue along the landscape buffer of trees that you, you know, had to protect the neighbor across the street. The Sorensens are behind you on the same side. There was also some concern with the neighbor across the street. So I do think that's a good option to continue the flow of the driveway so that everybody moves forward.
Yeah, and this is Gabe and there's ways that you could possibly put turf in that center part of the drive to reduce your numbers if you're close.
So based on the size of the lot, it looks like you're 12% for the driveway, 3,777 square. And if it's the recommendation of the ACC, I think that would carry some weight with the BZA if they go over a little. But as Gaven just said, you can do a median through the middle of that driveway to help reduce that number.
Yeah, I don't know that we're going to be over. Right now, we're, we're shy of 2,000. So we'd, we'd have 1,800 or so square feet to work with.
This is Joel. Who, who did the drawing of the line indicating the driveway?
I did, wow.
You know, I don't know that we would, just my opinion, that we would need to come the length of the, the house, but you know, just past the guest parking, go ahead and make the turn.
Yeah.
To. Yeah, that.
And then possibly shift some actual guest parking down more in line with the dining room.
Either that or just widen your, bring your trees a little closer to the street, then you have parallel guest parking along the trees there.
This is Ron Ferris. It sounds like Joel is liking the concept. And let me back up and say broadly, I'm excited about the revisions we've seen to the project. I want, I think what we're asking and what everybody's leaning to on this driveway is I think we've got to be careful in the amount of hard surface we would put on that side of the house. I think it needs to be handled with, with a very deft hand of it. I don't want it to look like a, you know, a long runway. And I think Joel is probably reacting to that when he'd say it's turns it after the guest parking. I, I'm sympathetic to the Sorensens in terms of that comment and their knowledge of what's happening on the street. I'd say it needs to be studied. One, where I'm headed is, is there's, this house also has the flexibility to be slid over to the left side setback to give you a little more green space to Bellevue Drive South if you needed it. I'm not in any way saying you, from my viewpoint, that you have to do that, but just FYI, that house has the ability to slide to the left as you face it to help you with geometry and area on that Bellevue Drive outside.
Ron, you mean the front left corner there can go to the dotted line?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other comments from neighbors?
Yes. So what, what is the board's recommendation here? Do we, do we need to see the changes we've discussed, Ron?
Well, I think, I think the changes, are we going to close public hearing? Do we want to go to the, the board's comments?
Sure, sure.
Is there, but is there anyone else besides Mrs. Sorensen there from the neighborhood that wants to speak? Nobody else has logged in. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lyle. May I make a comment?
Sure.
If each member would just recap their suggestions, it would be a matter of record. I could ensure that those suggestions will be followed.
All right, Ron, you want to start?
I can try and summarize all the comments I've heard. We're requesting the applicant to revise the brick to siding. We're requesting the applicant add a window at the master closet side elevation with, that is shuttered, closed. We're asking the applicant to raise grade at the front in order to eliminate the necessity of railings. We're asking the applicant to slightly alter the positions of the windows on the Bellevue Drive South that occur in the living room and I believe pantry. And lastly, what I have on my notes is we're asking the applicant to study the revision of the driveway to enter the loop off of Bellevue Drive South.
Anyone have anything else? And does, does the group feel like we can leave this to, to Lyle with, with his review or do we need Joel to come back to stuff again?
I think we can leave it to Lyle's review.
I think we can leave it to Lyle's review.
Yeah, I agree with that 100%.
Comment, Mal, that I have, Gaven?
Yeah.
Is that when they all clappard, I was thinking that the comment from the water table below the water table could be correct.
I agree with you, Gavin. I like some of the brick in there. It's nice.
Okay.
Would be to see if there is any way that we could reduce a 30-foot chimney or at least make it not all straight. If there's some dimensional sort of architectural thing to do to reduce that as it leaves the porch and goes up.
Talking about like shoulders on it somewhere?
Possibly if, if they could look at aesthetically, maybe introducing shoulders.
Narrow the chimney, narrow the chimney once it's climbing past the eve line of the porch, I think is what Gaven's trying to get done.
Yeah, it just looks too much like a rocket.
Is that a wood burning fireplace? Joel?
He may have went and got a drink.
I think he's just.
This is Preston. I had, I had assumed it was, yes, sir. I believe that's Joel's intent.
Okay.
And that's the reason for clearing the eve and windows, I assume.
Yes, sir.
Well, Ron, you started it. Can you phrase that as a, as a motion?
You mean, you want me to revisit all of those or you want me to say what? I make a motion, I make a motion to approve per the bullet point revisions previously enumerated?
That'll work for me. Do we have a second?
I second. Jeanette?
All in favor?
I.
Gaven?
Mal, a?
Ron?
Bunny? Jeanette?
I.
Is that everybody?
Everybody.
All right.
Congratulations, Joel.
Thank you, Lyle.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
That looks a lot better. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the next item under Old Business, the application for certificate of provenance for Shelby Brown. They are asking for a deferral. I believe they asked for one for 60 days. And 60 days has expired. They're asking for another deferral.
Okay.
I would move for approval. The applicant has asked for my assistance on this. So I will be meeting with him over the coming weeks to, to assist on this. But he, he, he has spent the last five weeks, if not six, securing a survey with topography. It's just came in last week and then he reached out to me for some assistance. So I would, I would make a motion for the deferral.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
Ron?
I.
Gaven?
I.
Bunny?
I.
Jeanette?
I.
Mal votes aye.
Is that a 60-day deferral?
Sixty?
Yes.
Okay.
Ron, I think that's great that he's hired an architect.
And Ron, does that mean you can't?
I will, from this point forward, I will recuse myself.
Okay.
We're going to have to give him a hard time. All right, next. Under New Business, the first application of Kristy Kaminsky, 609 Bellmead Boulevard, asking for a change from the HZC approved stucco, which was February 11th of this year, to a brick veneer for the entire house. She dropped off a brick panel here in my office and I know two of you came and saw it. Kristy, if you're there, it looks like you're unmuted. If you want to make any comments?
Yes, we are just asking for a change of material from the original stucco to change to brick. We've decided that may look a little bit more traditional, just the durability of the brick, we feel like would be a good change.
We see an elevation with, with the brick. It's been a while since we approved this one.
I do not have that with me.
Do we have any elevations of it?
Well, there's, there is a PDF on the website. It's, we should have that. It's just gonna show.
Okay, good. There we go. I just honestly, I saw the brick.
And this is that, the Palmetto brick, correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Just for the record, I think that we probably need, the drawings showed it still being stone from what I could see.
Well, it is, but I think Bunny just wanted to see an elevation of the house.
Okay.
No, this is showing stucco.
Yeah, yeah.
There was one, the labels were called out as stone. So I just want to make sure for the record that we are looking at brick.
And for the record, the, the brick is going only where stucco was previously and the stone remains?
The, the smooth stone would remain, but the brick is going everywhere else. So yes, it will be brick and then the smooth limestone will remain as accent.
So what is, the whole front body of the house then? That was stucco, but is now going to be brick?
No, it was stone.
It was actually the rough limestone on the front with the stucco on the other three sides.
Now it's going to be all brick with limestone accents that are already, that, that are on here.
Okay, that's correct.
All the stone and stucco becomes brick.
Yeah, because saying earlier where the stucco was, but where stucco and stone were, except for the limestone accents, that will all be consistent. It will all be brick. Correct. Okay.
I, I think that streamlines it. I will say that, in my opinion. Instead of switching from the rough stone into the stucco, I do think that is a little bit more streamlined. But it's not, it's a large house and we did discuss the massing of it.
So what is the roof again? What is the roof material? It's been a while.
It looks like it's a dimensional shingle roof.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Is there, can we get, is there anyone in, else on the Zoom that would care to comment about this proposal? And board, do we need to have more debate?
No.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Gaven, aye.
Ron, aye.
Jeanette, aye.
And Mal, aye. And Mal, aye?
Thank you very much.
Truly.
You.
Second item under new business is the application of Jennifer Jacobs, 436 Linwood Boulevard for demolition of existing home, which is property significance. Jennifer, it looks like you're unmuted. I'm gonna pull up the pictures. If my computer will cooperate. Jennifer, you're up.
Okay, I've never done this before, so I don't really know that much of what to say. But essentially I have this home and it's a quirky layout, some ceiling heights are seven feet, the rest of the house is eight feet. And it's been added on to, yeah, so this breezeway is just seven feet. And that to the left goes into a small kitchen. So this room is seven feet and then the basement is also seven feet, which is the only place that I can have washer dryer. There's no other place in the house for it. There's an upstairs that has, you can kind of see the A-line roof, so that was just an attic space. So it's got a funky roofline, not a lot of living space up there. And then the basement, can't really tell from this picture, but it floods with every rain. It's seven feet. That's where I have to have the laundry room, unfortunately. It's, the home was added on to before I bought it. I guess the side of the house, yeah, right there. I think that used to be a garage, which is now a bedroom. So it's got an extremely small bathroom. You can see it in that picture, wow, that super small shower. It's like probably a two by one and a half or super tiny. If you could show that, the top picture.
And what's the date of the original date of this home?
Thirty-seven.
Okay.
So this is the big bathroom that Lyle's showing right now. This is the bathroom that I use. And then there's another bathroom, Lyle, that I sent you the picture of. No, to the top, yeah, that one. It's a very small little shower. It goes to where, like where the sink is, that little white part, that's how long the shower is. So I've had multiple contractors come through here and they've all just said it's extremely quirky layout. The ceiling heights are weird. Really, the only other way to get taller ceilings would be to go down into the basement, but it's already only seven feet. So I can barely fit an SUV in there as it is.
And do we have a sense of what was original and what were the additions?
So to the very far, the picture that Lyle has up right now, the far right, that's where the garage was. So I think that was an addition from what I know. And then right next to it is that breezeway room with the seven-foot ceiling that connects the house.
Okay, so we do not think those are original. Lyle, is that, have you seen this house?
I think the breezeway may have been original and maybe they added garage on at a later date, which was converted into a bedroom. I think the original structure is the main body of the house. Possibly that may have been a porch on the right. It's difficult to tell.
And Jennifer, are you attempting to sell the house now?
So I am attempting to sell it and I've had it up for months and months. And, you know, I liked the home because it's something that I could afford to get into the area. It's really the only thing that I could have afforded to get into the area. And I was planning on staying here. Another house popped up that I purchased months ago. And I've had so many showings on this house, I can't even tell you, probably over 50 or 60, I would say. I have got people coming in left and right and they all loved the lot and Cole Plazin's got that big house next to me. But they just say, this is not a family home. It's quirky. I've had multiple people bring their own contractors over and they just say, we can't really work with the floor plan. You know, it's better to just start over. So it's just been, I'm honestly shocked that it's taken this long to sell the house. So I don't, you know, I've had some people reach out to me about trying to build on it. So I wanted to go ahead and just see if I could. But I've not had one person that wants to buy it as is. They all say they can't get past the floor plan and there's really no good way to add on.
So you're wanting to get a demolition permit to sell it as an empty lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
How big is the lot, Lyle? Do you know the acreage? Is it even an acre?
It's .81, I believe.
Thank you.
And I think that it's a 105 by 350. So I've met with Lyle before about building on it and I think that this lot really deserves like a very stately home on it. And I've had multiple builders come by and look at it and say that it would be great, but you know, there's just not a lot of value, except sentimental value to me and the home.
Lyle, is this comparable to the one on Sunnybrook? The lot size, do you think?
It is, yes.
Okay.
So there is, this is, this is an application for a demo only with nothing being presented to put in its place. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think what she's telling us is that the developers will no longer buy them because they know they gotta come see us.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. But Lyle, if this is taken down, it would have to come before us to be approved anyway, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it would be the same process, I think.
Absolutely.
I think we had something.
That's a concern that I have just of, you know, keeping the grass mowed. Once you tear it down, it can be very, I mean, I don't.
I'm not planning on tearing it down. I'm planning on just knowing. I've had a lot of developers reach out to me and their whole thing is, oh, well, we need to know if it can be torn down. So I've essentially almost already moved to my other house. I'm gonna keep up the, as long as it's for sale, I'm gonna keep it up. I'm not gonna actually tear it down. I just want to know the ability, if it is a builder that comes back and wants to move forward, if I can tear it down.
Right, and keeping up the lot is a municipal codes problem. That's not us.
Correct.
Well, we also, in the beginning, said we weren't gonna do demolition permits until we were looking at what was going back. And then we kind of did that early on. So that's the reason I'm asking that.
Yeah.
429 Royal Oaks.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to have some closed comments among the group?
Let's close the.
Do we have anybody?
Anybody else?
Anybody else? So we'll close the public portion and have a discussion with the board.
Well, I absolutely hear Bunny and I do think in the beginning, you know, we don't want to have empty lots sitting around, but I don't think realistically that's what will happen. People want to build here and, you know, I think I would like to see what's going back in, but I also don't want to unfairly burden this homeowner who obviously has bought another home in the area and just can't get rid of it because of, because this is unclear. I mean, I think we've done our, a great job in keeping the developers who are coming in toeing the line with what is required to build a new house and we'll continue to do that.
And I think we're exactly where we want to be. This homeowner has a problem and the developers are saying, we can't touch it until until you can convince us that it can be taken down and then they can deal with, and we can deal with what the new design looks like.
Yes, is there any statement that we can make to give them that she would have the right to be demoed in the event of the sale that would help her be able to sell this property?
That's what she said. If she gets the permit, she'll just say, hey, I was able to get a demolition permit. She just said she's not gonna tear it down herself.
That demo permit would be good for one year.
Right. Is there, I guess what I'm thinking is, is there any statement we can make? Like I think, Ron, you mentioned earlier, this has no significant historic value. It would be up for demolition. You know, just some way to let them know that they can.
I mean, sort of allowing a permit? I think we'd have to allow it. I think we bifurcate.
Yes.
I think once we allow it, it's allowed. And then she sells it with a demolition permit in hand. Yeah.
Yes.
Let me, let me back up.
Doug Barry, I think it might be helpful to make a finding like that for the record, just so somebody looking back know that we're being consistent about that. I don't see any of Devin's suggestions. What's worth?
I'm not wanting to make a long discussion about this.
Ron, go ahead.
Well, maybe broadly, I think we've got to set the table of why we would allow demolition on the project. I don't think it checks the boxes of our criteria that require it to fall into the category of being historically significant, other than its age. That's my broad view of the house. It doesn't have architectural details of redeeming value. The dormers are incorrect. The, just the overall scale and character.
The alteration, the alteration over the years have rendered it, it's just, yeah.
I do want to be careful in granting demolitions of projects without the knowledge of what falls before us, because there could be a case, in other words, I don't want to categorize this as a precedence, because there could be a house like this that does have some redeeming values that would put us on the fence and would require us to say, you need to bring us the design before we will grant a demolition permit. Or we could see these kind of action overtake the board. I don't know that to be okay.
To, Ron. That's why I was saying, and I think originally, because that's why we were originally saying that before, we wanted to see what was going back. I agree that there's nothing, I don't see anything with this house that if we thought something that was appropriate was coming back in its place, that any of us would have a problem tearing, you know, allowing this. And we also don't have anybody on the street saying, hey, don't tear this house down.
That's correct.
Yeah, this is Gaven. That's where I would want to make that list of what we were talking about. And I think Doug, that's what you were alluding to, just in fact, that we do that.
As long as you make a record and cite the reasons why it's not protected, then it's not a precedent you can't live with. Or be just, in this case, these facts warranted demolition without having something replaced. And then if you do get a case where it's protectable or historically significant or whatever terminology. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't be stuck with a bad precedent. So I think just making a list, when you make your motion to allow demolition, if that's what you're inclined to do, just state the reasons why.
But I agree with that. Ron, do you have that verbiage handy or?
I don't. I'm finding it right now.
You did such a good job on the last time.
It's on page 16.
Yeah, I'm navigating the website. I'm trying to find it. Lyle, is it under downloads?
No, it's on page four.
Lucky.
On the guidelines?
Yeah.
All right.
You got the table of contents, policy statement in the next page.
So you want me to make a motion along with what I'm about to say?
Sure.
Yes, please.
I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for demolition based on the following. Though the project does fall under the date of 1939, I don't feel that the project possesses integrity of design, materials, ownership, setting, location, feeling as defined for eligibility in the National Register of Historic Places. Nor do I feel it embodies other qualities or characteristics in judgment of the HZZ Board. It does not possess a broad cultural, political, economic, or social association with historic development of Bellmead. And those cases have not been presented that it does hold that category. It has not been identified to be associated with a historic person and it does not possess distinguishing characteristics of an architectural type reflective of dominant styles in the city of Bellmead. Therefore, I move for approval of the applicant's request to demolish.
I second the applicant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron Ferris, aye.
Gaven Duke, aye.
Mal, aye.
I've put on the screen the certificate of appropriateness application. And I don't know if you noticed or not, but I included that verbiage in the actual application.
That's great. Thanks, Lyle.
She's checked every one of those notes. So maybe in the future, we could reference the application possibly instead of reading.
Yes.
Can you email one of those out?
It's on the website.
Okay.
I replaced it after the last meeting.
Okay.
Just to kind of give everyone a guide on what the house possessed.
Okay. Any other business for the board?
I would like to add, I'm going through some of my notes, guys, I would like to add into my motion that the granting of this demolition in no way indicates to the applicant, we have verified the building setbacks or building envelope for replacement.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good add.
And I would ask the applicant to make sure she understands that comment. If not, to reach out to Lyle. If this board in no way has verified or checked the lot to indicate that it, once the house is torn down, that it has a viable building envelope.
Yes, I understand that. I've met with Lyle previously on the building envelope. So I understand that. And I appreciate y'all being so thoughtful on this and I know that this board has been a great addition. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business for the board?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we need to review the minutes.
Yeah, from last meeting.
And I do have something for new business, too.
Does anyone have comments on the minutes from last meeting? I'm sorry, I forgot it.
No.
I do not.
To approve the meetings.
I had a couple of typos that I forwarded to Edie earlier, so that'll be fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Gaven, aye.
Mal, aye.
Ron, aye.
Gaven, aye.
So moved. So moved. New business?
Yes, we, y'all, and this came back up again, and I was speaking with Lyle today, and he was telling me about this great renovation, very well-done renovation on Bellmead Boulevard. And it brought me back to, I really do think we need to do awards every year of just recognizing when people are doing this well. I just think that has been, that was recommended to us, that we can do, you know, some kind of, recognize them and put something in the Bellmead newsletter or something. I'm not exactly sure what we should do, but to recognize a well-done renovation, a well-done new build.
I agree with you, and Bunny, the Historic Commission Metro does this every year, looks at, and it would be fairly easy for us, because there's, you know, far less to review, but either a builder or a homeowner could submit their home for a number of different awards by the Historic Commission. We could do that and issue a certificate, and highlight it in the newsletter, so that people see what it is. That's.
What we're looking for, and just recognizing people who put the time into it. It's Melanie Baker's house, he was saying, was just phenomenally well-done.
Oh, it's amazing.
I can't wait to see it. And, but, you know, let's recognize them for that. They've done it well. And we, they've taken an old home, and they have, it wasn't a huge old home, but they've done an addition, but they've preserved it and just, it sounds like done it so well, and.
Yeah, Hudson Walker was the builder. I also think it gives some, it definitely gives some kudos to the builders and architects who are helping, because they, you know, the homeowners, most of the time, they just don't know. And the architects and the builders, that's who we're relying on, so.
And, you know, if you're about to hire a builder or architect, and they say, "Hey, our house got the best renovation last year." I mean, that's really nice. And I think our committee can make those awards. You know, we can do the awards, and we can make them, and maybe we do it, I don't know, we could pick a month, and we're going to do it in December if we want to. But I just, we've talked about it several times, so I'm making a motion that we, can I do that? Is this the proper way to make a motion?
Sure.
I'm making a motion that we establish an award for the, and we can change the wording on this, but basically best renovation and best new build.
You know, I would think, Bunny, also, you might want to classify that into square footages as well.
Yeah, maybe we just call them the Historic Zoning Commission Awards, and then we can talk amongst ourselves and.
Great, even better. That's, we may want to award one year that. Excellent idea. Okay, should I re, do I redo my motion? How do we do that?
No, but I nominate you chairman of the.
Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to mention that next month, Jane Coleman-Katone, who helped us in the beginning with this, is going to come and speak to us, and she's going to talk about the certified local government program, and she could probably give us more insight on the activity Bunny just came up with.
Well, it's not that we've discussed several times, but I think we just need to finally do it.
Yeah.
I agree.
I think that's great.
So.
Put some goodwill out there.
That's what I think. It's just, sometimes I feel like we're the no police, and it's just nice to, because it's always better to be, whenever you can be positive as opposed to negative, it's always a good thing. So when we can be, these are positive steps that are, I think it's all positive, the work we're doing, but.
Oh, it is, and the beautification committee does a really nice job in, you know, recognizing people, and I think she does a great job doing that, so this would be a good thing for us to do as well.
Okay.
Do we have a second to Bunny's motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Congratulations, Chairman.
Awards chair.
Awards chair.
Oh, that'll be great on my resume.
All right, thanks, everybody.
I have to tell y'all this, though. I'm doing a house in Montego right now, and it's an 1890s Victorian, and we're having to go before their Historical Zoning Commission for a few things, and the people there were very impressed that I'm on the Historical Zoning Commission for Bellmead, so I'm hoping that gets us somewhere up there, but pretty funny.
Aye.
Yeah.
Shouldn't we all, shouldn't we all get blazers with little emblems?
Yeah.
Comes down, comes down on the blazers.
Yeah, not, you're not supposed to wear any uniforms right now.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a, we need a motion.
Motion to.
To adjourn, yes.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, again.
Thank you.